Hello there, good evening. Welcome into another edition of the J Mac Podcast. So glad that you are here with me tonight. Check something here, make sure we're all connected. Can you guys hear me okay? Can you hear everything alright? Let me know. Again, I've been adjusting things, messing with things and tweaking and redoing the lighting and all of that stuff. My constant quest for broadcast perfection. How's everybody doing? Let me know where you are listening from. And I know we're a little early tonight. I thought that might please some of you who end up staying up late. Orion says yes, everything sounds good. B Kelly also says yes, everything is looking and sounding good. Awesome. I've got a couple of things that I want to talk to you about tonight. I always have a couple, but we get so deep into conversation. I don't know if we're going to make it all the way through, but we will try. We will do our very best. Jared says, "Sounds great listening from Wes Jordan." Where else are you guys listening in from? I thought, you know, I thought I had my TikTok issue solved. And then, just as I go on the air, oh, maybe it's working now. Let's check and see. I think we're gonna be on TikTok tonight. Let me see, we are on Facebook, we're on YouTube, we're on LinkedIn, we're on Instagram. Here we go, going live on TikTok. See if that works as well. Let's see, Colin is listening in from Riverton. My friends, tonight's one of those nights where, kind of like on Tuesday, when I came to you and we were talking about Mitt Romney being booed at the Utah GOP, and how we've kind of lost our way when it comes to knowing how to deal with political differences and how to deal with our representatives. You know, those are the types of shows where I know we have to talk about it, but I hate that we have to talk about it. Tonight is one of those nights. I'm sure you've seen the footage here locally of Granite School District and what happened at their school board meeting. Unfortunately, it is not unique to Granite School District. I have clips from across the country where school boards are being interrupted and canceled because parents are so upset that their children have to wear a mask. And I think that there's some deep seated things behind all of this that I want to share with you. Excuse me, and I also want to get your feedback. As well, I also want to talk a little tech tonight. We haven't talked about technology for a long time. I don't know if you saw the rollout from Apple, the AirTags. And when they rolled them out, this is so you can find your lost keys and devices. And a lot of people said, "These sound like the perfect tool for stalking." And Apple says, "No, no, no, we figured that all out. We've made it so these cannot..." Excuse me. Wow, I'll have to edit that out in the podcast. Apple has said, "No, no, we've made it so that you can't use these for stalking." And a lot of people have looked into them and they've said, "Oh, really? Is that true?" And then if we have time, I want to talk about the fact that China has left a rocket up in the atmosphere, and that rocket is going to re-enter the Earth's atmosphere. And literally, nobody knows where this thing's gonna land, if it's gonna land, how much of it is gonna land. And I saw one scientist say, "There's nothing you can do about it, so don't worry about it." And I'm like, "Okay, alright. There's nothing you can do about it, so don't worry about it." Unbelievable. Here's Orion, he says, "So I heard some of the loudmouths that showed up at the school board meeting weren't even from Granite District. They are making a circuit from district to district. Any truth to that? I don't know. I know that they were considering charges." Orion says, "The cough is definitely COVID. Better get it checked." I got the first vaccination. I get the next vaccination on Tuesday. So hopefully not. I don't feel any other issues, Orion. So let's hope that that stays okay. Alright, let's go back to the original, our first topic tonight. This is Granite School District. And again, I have clips. This is not unique to Granite School District here in Utah. This is happening across the country. And there's so many things that I have to say about this, and there's so many things that I feel about this. It really is disconcerting. Todd says, "I just got my second vaccination Monday." Good for you, Todd. We all need to get vaccinated. So I started us out on TikTok, but literally, nobody is peeking in. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna restart it, try again. Everybody bear with me as we figure these things all out together. No, that's the wrong In fact, why don't we do this? I'm gonna figure it out while you watch what happened at Granite School District. So Granite School District invites three people in advance to speak to the school board. And they had set it up so that there was a person against wearing the masks, the children wearing the masks. And then there was somebody in favor. And the person who was against got up and spoke, and there was a lot of cheering and those types of things. But then when it came time for the person in favor of wearing the masks, that person didn't have much of an opportunity to speak. And then it just gets worse and worse from there.
To actually talk opposite of what the loud noise is. It is about civil discourse.
Guys, we are in a public meeting. You had your speaker. No, listen. And it's Star's turn to speak.
So let me go ahead and finish if I can, President Winder. We have dealt with leave of employees, quarantines, and vaccinating an entire workforce. So I taught junior high school, and you don't scare me. Yeah. You teach junior high school, right, Nicole? It's not a big deal. So...
Alright, we're actually gonna close. You haven't signed up, ma'am. We're gonna close citizen participation.
You let a senator come up here and speak in the name of my children who you guys are abusing? Are you serious?
Nope. We've had our citizen participation. We're gonna follow. We have that. We need to continue our board meeting. If you, yeah, we do need to continue. We have
Winder, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second. We have a motion to adjourn. And a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Wow. Wow, wow, wow. Todd says, "They're so desperate to be oppressed victims, they think wearing a piece of cloth on their face is oppression." You know, I don't, I don't even want to get into the issue of the mask. We might have to a little bit. I mean, these parents are saying that making a child wear a mask is child abuse. We can get into that. But what stands out to me more and more with the booing of Mitt Romney, with the shutting down of school board meetings, with January 6th, is that we have lost our minds when it comes to representation and what it means. And so many of these people will claim, in fact, the first speaker, she talked about rights and the Constitution and those types of things. And they want those rights from the Constitution, but they're not honoring the rest of the Constitution. The rest of the Constitution, I guess, doesn't matter. There's a, there's a dangerous holdout from the revolution. And that holdout is the idea that when you're not getting what you want, then you take over. The impression left by several founders that when you're not getting your way, you have a right to rise up against your government and take over. And I don't know if you saw in the end of that, in the end of that clip, but the gentleman in the suit, who was causing so much of the mayhem, he says, "If you're leaving, then we're taking over." And then he started to make a motion to take over. So this is now, this is not just a protest of a school board meeting. This is an attempted coup of Granite School District School Board. These individuals literally were prepared and ready to take over the school board and start making their own motions, as if somehow that's how representation works. As if somehow that's what the founders had in mind. That when things aren't going your way, you rise up with your weapons, or your mouths, or disruption, or civil disobedience, and you take over. That is not the intent of the founders. There is nowhere in the Constitution where this is suggested, implied, supported. In fact, the intent was to create a system where you have redress without those things. But this is one of the things that has persisted in our society. That if you don't like it, the founders said, "You can just take it over." But these are the same people that love the Constitution. They love the document, but do they know what's really in the document? The beauty of the document is that when there's disagreement, you don't get your knives and your pitchforks. You get your vote, and you get your representation, and you get your court of law. But somehow, that is lost. The founders gave us courts. They gave us, well, states gave us school board elections. They gave us elections, elected officials, ways to seek redress. All of these things are there and are available. Nowhere in what makes this country great, or what makes the Constitution great, exists the idea that if you don't like it, you just take over. But we are seeing more and more of that mentality. And it is frightening. And these people believe the Constitution is on their side. And it is not. It is not. Jenny says, "Unbelievable and so embarrassing for them. What examples are they showing that are children and the next generation?" Such a great question, Jenny. What are you teaching your children about representation? I guarantee you, these people are like, they go home and they're like, "Today, I fought for our rights." No, today, you overthrew the normal functioning of government. That's what you did. When the founders gave you away, if you don't like what the Granite School District is doing with masks, then you all get together and you file a lawsuit against the Granite School District. There are lawsuits going on across the country that have been filed for people who don't want their children to have to wear a mask. That is your recourse. That's recourse number one. Recourse number two is, you know who's on that school board, and you choose your own people and you run against them. And you fight for change that way. You go to the school board and you speak, and somebody in favor of the mask-wearing for kids, and somebody against the mask-wearing for kids was supposed to speak. They let the person speak who was speaking on their side and in their favor. They did not let the person speak who had a differing viewpoint. And that's the other thing about the founders, knowledge that we will disagree, and giving us a system where we can disagree without the knives and the pitchforks. Through representation, through our vote. So I would ask all of these people, "Is the Constitution really that good?" Because you're going outside of it to get what you want. Is it really an inspired document? Is this system of government really inspired? Or is it only inspired when you get your way? Because that's what it's becoming. And it's an attitude that, if you look at other countries and history, you will find it's an attitude that is prevalent in dictatorships, in fascism, an attitude where there's only one way of thinking, there's only one way of doing something, and that way should be forced upon everybody else. That is not a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. A government of the people and by the people and for the people lets the people decide, and the people will disagree. And we have been blessed with a wonderful system that allows that disagreement to go forward, and allows the battle to exist in the arena of ideas. Now, as I said, this is happening not just here in Utah. Let's take a little trip around the country, shall we?
You gave our children non-medical masks! Using up non-medical masks!
Devin says, "Jay, there is no science behind kids wearing masks at school. If you want to prevent disease transmission among grade school children, you'll need to put every child in a bubble with its own HEPA filter. This is all about politics and control from liberal school board members. If you know these school board members, first of all, I wouldn't call them liberals. Second of all, Devin, that does not excuse the behavior. Let's play in your world that that's 100% true." Then your proper course of recourse is not to shut down the proper lawful functioning of government. Your recourse is to file a lawsuit. Your recourse is to replace them. Your recourse is to run against them. But just for kicks and giggles, I, before the show, went and did a lot of research about masks and kids. And the thing that we learn is that kids around kids, there's not really a need. But we know that kids can carry. And so the concern is not for the children. The concern is for the adults that the children are around. Now, I keep hearing this idea that it's for politics and control. Can you elaborate for me, Devin? What evil plan is the result of getting children to wear a mask for eight months, and then releasing them once the disease is gone? We heard Governor Cox, "We've got a couple weeks left, a few weeks left, and then we're gonna be done." What is their far-reaching, "Ooh, evil plan. I know, we're gonna get them to wear masks. And then they'll be our minions, and we can control them." What is the evil plan here? The truth is, there is plenty of evidence to back up the efficacy of wearing masks in all age groups. Can you find the stray stories that say otherwise? Yeah, they're out there. They're out there. But we know that wearing a mask reduces transmission. And we know that children, although most of them show zero symptoms, that they can spread. They don't spread as much. It's good news. But what is the evil plan? Let's say all of that is not true. Let's say it's all a fabrication. What is the evil plan? That's what I don't understand. And every school board across the country, and not only that, every school board across the globe, they're in on the plan, control. And by the way, I just have to point this out, the mask mandates were put in by Republicans. Oh dang. It's too easy to blame politics. It's too easy to blame liberalism. The truth is that you may go on and you may come to your own conclusions, and you differ with their conclusions. And so you have recourse. If you think this is a violation of civil rights, you file a lawsuit. If you think that they're incredibly liberal, you run against them and you win in the arena of ideas. We can talk about whether or not asking a child to wear a mask is child abuse. I'm gonna tell you something, and you're gonna hate this. Actually, I think it might be good for him. And I'll tell you why. I will tell you why. Jenny says, "The school board couldn't even overturn the mask mandate." It's a public health order. You're correct. Jared says, "I don't know why we're trying to make the district change the rule when they aren't the ones that made it. The state has given the mandate for schools to have the masks still. People need to stop treating innocent people like the enemies." Devin says, "I live in Idaho, and every school district has their own choice. It's the school boards." That's in Idaho. Kayleen says, "Parents want to be heard, and the school boards aren't listening." Kayleen, so what's the answer? What is the prescribed answer to that problem? The prescribed answer has never been to overthrow school boards. And that's what you just witnessed. That is not the answer. Think about, how does democracy work? How does representation work if when we don't feel we're getting our way, when we don't feel that a politician is listening, then we just take over? What is that? Where does that come from? You certainly can't be a believer in the sanctity of the Constitution if you believe that that is the proper course of action, because in nowhere, in any place in the Constitution, is that prescribed. Nowhere is that the proper course of action. Let's see. Heather says, "It's 16 days away, too. Why now?" I got another one for you.
We don't need to. The science says we don't need to. We do not need masks for our kids. It's child abuse. Do not. Take the masks off our kids.
Thank you for your feedback.
Okay, that's okay. Hey, look, we had some excitement, but we'll keep moving on.
And I want to talk about whether or not it's child abuse, but we'll get to that. Devin clarifying, he says, "No, I don't condone that behavior, but parents have to be aggressive with the school boards, or they will be dismissed." Devin, this is how you get aggressive with the school board in a school board meeting. You have somebody get up and address the school board. And then you start petitions, you go out and knock doors, you find people to run against them. If aggressive means taking over the course of government and the normal functioning of government, aggressive should be, it shouldn't be aggressive, it should be active. Activism. Not aggressivism, if that's a word. Not yelling and screaming like children because somebody disagrees with you, and you're not getting your way. This is becoming more and more prevalent. Kayleen says, "Four school districts in Utah have decided to let parents sign mask exemptions for their kids. They can decide." You know, it's interesting, as I know a lot of people, and this is anecdotal, but I know a lot of people who work at schools, and they are always telling me that the ones who want to wear the masks are the kids. And maybe that's just high school and junior high. I don't know a lot of elementary school workers, but they find that it's the kids that believe the science and want to wear the masks because they want to set the example for the parent. Again, anecdotal. This is, hi, I don't, Hi123, what was the topic? I hope you understand the topic. It was people disrupting school boards because they don't like the mask mandate. Do you use a mask? Yes, I do, when I go out in public. What age of the child? I don't know what the age mandate is in schools. I think it's all kids. And I don't think it's a bad thing, and I will tell you why. Todd says, "The CDC still recommends grade school kids wear masks at school. Not liberal school board members labeling is so lazy." No, the CDC's part of it. They're liberal, and that's their "mooah" plan. Because if we can get them to wear a mask now, we can control them later. Orion says, "Granite School District covers mostly blue areas. These guys represent a vocal minority, meaning the protests, or school board isn't partisan, at least not officially." You're right, not officially. Kayleen says, "The adults have been able to get vaccinated. If the mask mandate is lifted for adults, why do our kids still need it?" It hasn't been lifted for adults in schools. It's been lifted as a mandatory, but many businesses are still requiring it. In fact, most businesses that I go into are still requiring it. But the mask mandate in schools is for... But the mask mandate in schools is for everybody in those schools. My wife works at a school, she wears a mask every day. So it's equal opportunity, the kids and the adults. Jenny on Facebook, much of society is not concerned about the health and well being of the adults that work in the schools, the past year has made that abundantly clear. No, they're worried about their children, that's what they care about. Their children, and I think, and I keep alluding to this, that they're hurting their children, not helping their children. And I will tell you why. Devon says, I didn't excuse their behavior, Jay, don't put words in my mouth, Jay, COVID will never go away, it is here to stay, so what is your plan, wear masks forever? Well, I'll tell you what my, my plan is, is to hope that enough people get a vaccine, that we have some level of herd immunity. At least that we can get to a place where it's like the flu. The other thing that people miss is that the more people that are not vaccinated, the more likelihood that this thing mutates and becomes a problem again. See, I'm an upstream thinker, I'm a long term thinker, we have to think about the long term consequences here. So the more people that are out there that are catching this thing, whether or not they're dying from it, because people are like, I'm not in a high risk group, so only the people in a high risk group should have to run and hide, I should be able to go and live my life. What people don't understand is that every person who catches it has an opportunity to mutate that bad boy. And the more people who catch it, the more opportunity there is for variants. And so we may have complete control over this thing, or a place where we can get to herd immunity, if enough people got vaccinated. But because people are refusing to, we are running the likelihood that there will be more mutations, more variants, and it could return to a place where our current vaccines do not work on it. So in my opinion, what Americans should be doing, is should be asking the question, what can I do as an individual? We're asking, we're asking the question, what does the government want to make me do? We're, we're approaching it from the most selfish perspective possibly. Instead of the Christian thing, thinking about your neighbor, instead of the human thing, humane thing, think about others, instead of, I think, the American thing, worrying about the country as a whole, instead of thinking, man, what role can I play? Is there something that I can do to make this thing go away faster? Because the faster it goes away, the, the faster we all return to normal. And the more people are caught up in themselves, and so wrapped up in what they're being told to do, the longer this stays. So my hope and my wish and my desire is that people start thinking about more than just And that we get to a level of herd immunity, and Devon, if I put words in your mouth, I apologize, that's one of the difficulties with text messaging. It's very difficult to assess tone, it is never my intent to label or to misinterpret. So if I did that, you have my apology. Todd says, well said Jay, unfortunately, people who tend to disregard doctors and medical experts don't apply logic about the evil plan to control children. I just think about the level of, of planning at the highest levels of the globe that would have to be involved. Robert Lee on Facebook, do you think Antifa and liberals and the Jews are collaborating to force a mask mandate in a country, in a county in Utah nobody cares about? Rick says, just a small group of loud mouths that don't represent most of us. I don't, look, it's anecdotal, I don't know what the numbers are, but I do know that there's a, a large percentage of Republicans that are refusing to wear masks, have always refused to wear masks, and that are refusing to get vaccinated. I know many of them personally. And they actually looked down on me when I told them that I was getting vaccinated, that I'm a pawn in this system. That I think to myself, man, is there something that I can do? You mean putting this piece of cloth over my face when I go out could potentially save lives? Yeah, I'll do it. You don't have to make me, I'll do it. I, I've done the research, I've, I've read, I guarantee you, I've read more COVID studies than the vast majority of Americans. It's what I do. I'm not a doctor, but as far as a layman is concerned, I spend a lot of time researching this stuff before I talk about it. So can I, have I saved some lives? I don't know. I don't know. But I just don't understand why that is such a gross, terrible thought. Hey, could you put a mask on? I just, I've never, never understood it. Devon says, no Jay, masks do not prevent transmission among kids, if a child has COVID, it is on their hands, which touch everything, duh, bring out the bubbles or homeschool everyone. COVID is transmitted primarily through the air. Can you stop it from transmitting through, through hands and things like that? Will you hope they sanitize? But you know what's interesting is, one of the reasons why the hands transmit is because kids are always touching their face. You put a mask on their face and you reduce the amount of touching of the transmittable areas. But COVID is transmitted through water molecules, through the air, primarily. And again, I didn't say it was transmitted among kids, from kid to kid, although that's, that's how it happens. I'm worried about transmission from kid to adult, that's what I'm. B. Kelly says, a state mandate isn't lawful, it's a policy, I believe. I disagree with you, it's totally lawful, it's 100% lawful. The Constitution reserves those powers to the state, just like a state can tell you what speed limit to drive, just like a state can tell you, you can't smoke in front of people or around people. They take away, states take away your rights and liberties all the time. And as long as they are not protected by name in the Constitution, they're allowed to do it. And you fight those battles in your state legislature, you fight those battles everywhere else. There's, there's a reason you can't go walking around the streets naked. It's because you'll be arrested and charged with public indecency. That is the state telling you that you have to clothe and cover parts of your body. And that's not done for health reasons, that's just done to protect our sensibilities. So if a state can tell you that you have to clothe, they can tell you to put on a mask. Now fortunately, they're only doing it during the height of the pandemic. And their goal is to get you back to a place where you don't have to do it anymore. Businesses have a right to do it, no shirts, no shoes, no service. There's just no, and I've been watching court cases across the country work their way through the courts about this mask issue. Waiting for something to go to the Supreme Court, waiting for some clarity, if they don't have the authority, then your recourse is to challenge them in the courts, or to vote and vote them out. That is your recourse. Orion says, that's just the thing about right wing conspiracy theories, the details aren't important, it's the idea that a baddie wants you to do something evil that evokes Todd says, the law allows the governor and state legislature the authority to issue policies and mandates, of course, it's lawful. They do it all the time. All the time. What's funny is people only care about it when it affects them. This is one of the funny little quirks to me. Like, did you care? I'm, I'm just curious, did you care when the state went after smokers? Did you care? Where were the protests in the streets? Smokers' rights? Where were those protests? Were the people saying, you can't tell me what I can and can't do? This is my freedom? Where were all these civil liberties people? When they said, you can't smoke in a business? Because when you smoke and it blows smoke, it affects other people? Well, that sounds kind of like a mask mandate, doesn't it? Where were the outrage, the screaming cries, the mass of Republicans saying, fighting for the rights of, of smokers? The truth of the matter is, is that people don't care when other people lose their rights, they only care when they perceive a slight against themselves. And they don't take the time to find out the laws, they don't understand or have read the Constitution. They don't do the math and look around and say that states constantly regulate behavior of individuals, constantly, because it is lawful and it is constitutional. Man, you mess with them individually and it's over. It's over. Kayleen says, I'm not saying that it's okay, but I'm saying that in my district, we have brought up concerns of CRT for three straight months, and they won't even add the topic to the agenda to discuss it, we aren't being taken seriously. Well then, your job in that case is to replace them. That's your job. Taylor says, my kids have no problem wearing masks at school, my son accidentally saw the board meeting though, that traumatized him. Devon says, I like how you're showing all these clips of out of control anti-maskers and not showing any clips of well behaved anti-maskers with actual excellent arguments, let's show those clips too, we know what your side is on. I did not come on the air tonight to try and justify the mask mandate, that is not my goal. I said that from the very beginning. Anybody who is fighting for their cause or their, their right and is doing so peacefully and respectfully, has my support in their behavior. I may disagree with their opinion. But this discussion, although we've weaved in the efficacy of having a kid wear a mask, is not about showing the evil anti-maskers. It's about showing people who are so disgruntled with the choices of their representatives, that they're literally seeking to overthrow the normal functioning of government. That's what has me up in arms. I have spent many shows and spent many hours talking about the efficacy of wearing masks, mask mandates, all of those things. So that's why I'm not, I'm, you what, you want me to just show a bunch of clips of people respectfully fighting for, for their rights? Happens all the time, I love it, it's beautiful. And if you're on the show tonight and you're, you're speaking out against me, I'm reading your texts and I'm telling you where I agree or disagree with you, I'm not blocking you, I could block you. I could shut you down, I could chase you away, but I want your viewpoint to be heard. There's a, there's a, there's a, a wonder about that, that I love. But this is about taking over a school board meeting to get what you want. And, and I can guarantee you Devon, that if these were pro-maskers who were upset that the school board was undoing the mask mandate, and they had done the exact same thing, I can guarantee you without any doubt or concern, that I would still be doing this show. And I would be going after them. So please don't make this about some bias against people who disagree with me. I love and cherish disagreement, that's what this whole show is about. Heather says, my three year old happily wears his mask. B. Kelly says, teachers' unions directly influence, this has become political on all fronts, it's very hard to know what to believe. Let me tell you why, from what I've seen from teachers' unions. I mean, you have to ask the question, instead of just saying, oh, teachers' unions are supporting this, so, we know teachers' unions are evil, so that must mean that the mask mandate is evil. And I'm not saying you're suggesting that, B. Kelly, but that's a lot of, we put a label on it, say, teachers' unions support it, so it must be bad. Teachers' unions went after this issue because members, who are the members of teachers' unions? We act like teachers' unions are like this unique organization? Who are the members of teachers' unions? Oh, teachers. And, and teachers in huge numbers went to these unions and said, and you remember this whole debate that happened for a long time? They said, we don't want to go back to schools until there's a mask mandate. And so instead of it being some evil, muah, plan to control children, it was teachers' unions responding to their membership saying, we are worried about our own health. And we don't want to return to schools until there is a mask mandate for everybody. Not some deep seated, evil, terrible plan. Now you can then say disagree with the science of mask wearing. That doesn't mean they're evil, it means you disagree with each other. Let's see, Devon says, yeah, and everyone can get vaccinated now, so either get vaccinated so we can get back to normal, or you can stay in your house for the rest of your life, it's been available to everyone for weeks. Everybody, please get vaccinated. Orion says, a virus improves itself by means of natural selection, which means the variants will spread more and more and be more virulent. I can't say that. David says, I imagine Republicans would be wearing a mask more if Trump set an example on day one when doctors recommended it. You're exactly right. One of my pet peeves against Donald Trump is, and I, I think he possibly could have won the election, the reelection, if he had handled COVID just a little differently, not terribly differently. But if he set that example of mask wearing, if he sought to unify the country behind a cause, and we talk about great leaders when America faces a challenge, a great leader comes out and they speak to the country, and they get everybody involved, FDR getting everybody involved in the war effort, women coming out of the home into the workplace to build bombs and planes and bullets, just coming together. You think about that time, nobody was saying, I'm not, you can't make me leave my house, you can't make, it's like, we're, we're, we're a country at war. And you had a leader that could come out and rally the nation together. Instead, his, his tactic of choice was to divide. And I think that's why it is so political wearing a mask today. Let's see, Kayleen says, so we were told two weeks to slow the curve and here we are 14 months later, I did everything asked of me, wearing a mask, taking care of my elderly parents and virtual learning, I am now seeing serious issues with my kids, risk is involved in everything, risk is involved in everything, but not this level of risk. I want you to think about something. All of that happened, you wore a mask, you social distanced, the vast majority of Americans social distanced, whether they wanted to or not, they were forced to home. I want you to think about this country shut down completely. And 500,000 people still died. Now if you think that that's normal risk, what would have happened if we didn't shut down? And I want you to, if you're not seeing it, because it's not in your social media stream or you don't participate in world news, I want you to take a look at what's going on in India right now with COVID. That society is getting rocked. That society is getting rocked. They are out of hospital beds. They are out of oxygen. We just finally sent them a bunch of our vaccine reserves. The country is getting rocked. This was not your average everyday risk. It never was. It never was. Todd says, "The people who say the government can't tell them what to do often don't realize that literally every law in the government is the government telling them what to do." What's interesting is you also have a lot of people on the right who love to tell people what to do. They love to legislate morality. They love to, you know, force people to do things. It's one of those crazy things. They have no problem doing it until it's something we cherish, something we love, and then all of a sudden, it's a big thing. Heather says, "We need to have faith in the medical teams that have created this vaccine. I'm not a doctor, so I'm at the mercy of those medical professionals. I have faith in the team of doctors that made the vaccine. If I didn't, then the only other argument is all doctors and world leaders are all in on this COVID conspiracy all across the whole globe." I know, across the whole globe. Devin says, "Jay, your argument is ridiculous. Every kid touches their face many times in our mask or no mask. You know that. Saying it reduces face touching is completely worthless. They are still touching their face." No, they're touching their mask. It's not worthless. Therefore, masks don't stop COVID. Go swab every COVID positive child and it will be all over their hands but masks. Devin, I have read hundreds of studies about the efficacy of masks. Hundreds. Not just one. I don't listen to the media. I don't listen to social media. I have a feed that sends me the stories directly from the peer-reviewed studies. And I read them and read them and read them. And when a new one comes in, I read them. And I am telling you right now, after having read hundreds of studies about the efficacy of wearing a mask and does it stop, it doesn't stop the spread of COVID, but it dramatically reduces it, there is zero doubt in my mind. Zero. Now, you can come to a different conclusion, but to say mine is ridiculous after the level of research that I have done and then combine that with every epidemiologist on the planet, every is probably a bit much, all the world leaders, the CDC, everybody else. I'm sorry, I'm gonna side with them. I'm not gonna side with you. I'm sorry. I'm not gonna side with you on that. If, if, everybody knows me on this podcast. If I had read 100 studies and found that time and time again, masks weren't working, what possible reason would I have to be here on the air saying that they do? Everybody here knows, I would be fighting the battle, saying masks are ridiculous. This whole thing is ridiculous. There are mountains upon mountains upon mountains of evidence that mask wearing reduces the spread. It is not ridiculous. It is proven science. Accepted by the globe. In the face of all that, fine, disagree with it. Go on Google and find your one study that you're hanging your hat on and I'll send you 100 that counteract that. This is proven science at this point. Chris says, "It's amazing that the pro-life party seems okay with hundreds of thousands of Americans dying over a virus." Robert Lee says, "What? Can you cite any studies or is it your big brain education of Fox News as your source? So adults, you agree masks help with transmission but not with children?" So I'm assuming you're talking to Devin. B. Kelly says, "Your rights end where mine begins," and I must be too much of a conservatarian? I've heard that your rights begin and where mine begin, but you make it sound like that's easy. Because if I have an infectious disease, am I taking away your right by spreading it? We certainly feel that that's the case if I'm a smoker. If I'm smoking and forcing you to inhale smoke, you would say, "No, you can't have that right to smoke around me." So accepted with secondhand smoke? Not accepted with highly contagious diseases? Okay. James says, "Did I miss the Apple AirTag segment?" No, we're not there yet, James. We've been going for 56 minutes. We're not there yet. Sorry. Let's see. Devin says, "I work in healthcare. I know how disease transmission works. COVID can live on surfaces for plenty of time." I didn't say that it can't live on surfaces. I will tell you, I've read plenty of studies about surface transmission. And initially, in the process of COVID, we thought that surface transmission was going to be a really big thing. But over time, we've realized that it doesn't spread nearly as much as it does through the aerosols in the air. So I'm not going to debate that it doesn't spread by touch. That's why none of us are shaking hands and that's why we're all doing the hand sanitizer. I support all of those methods too. But primary source of trans, let's say it's equal transmission. Equal transmission, touch and aerosol. Well, that's an excuse to social distance, wash your hands and wear a mask. Let's say it's 75/25, 75% touch, 25% mask. That's still pretty strong evidence to wear a mask and to wash your hands and to sanitize. But again, primary means of transmission of this COVID disease is aerosol transmission. Let's see. Kevin says, "The FDA has only approved the COVID vaccination for emergency use. They have yet to been fully approved by the FDA. Masks have been in use by medical personnel for years. They are to prevent you from passing on disease, not the other way around." Kayleen says, "I've always respected your ability to see things from both sides, Jay. I don't believe these parents showed up with the intention of overthrowing the board. They showed up to advocate for the kids." Well, I don't know what their intent was. All I can tell you is that by the time the thing is over, there's one guy in front saying, "We're gonna, we're taking over," making a motion, other people, you can hear them in the back confirming his motion. This could only be five people. So again, I'm talking about their behavior and their actions. I don't know what their intent was when they got there. I just don't know. Let's see. Oh, oh, so I had this that I wanted to share with you. Let's move on a little bit about whether or not it's child abuse to wear a mask. Okay? It is not medically harmful for regular, everyday, healthy children to wear a mask. It is not. It doesn't reduce carbon dioxide. It doesn't, it doesn't hold in carbon dioxide and it doesn't reduce oxygen as long as you're wearing the right kind of mask. If you pick up some random material from the house and you slap it on your kid and say, "Make this a mask," then it might. I mean, people are making masks from all over the place. But is it child abuse to make your kid wear a mask? There are a lot of negative impacts from COVID. I think that our children have been taking mental health hits. I think that adults have been turning to self-medication. There's a lot of problems that have come from the pandemic. But I gotta tell you, isn't that life? Do we really think and expect that we're gonna raise our children without trauma? I mean, I think about, and maybe it's because I'm such a student of history. I think about these people screaming that this is child abuse. And then I think about the kids in London during the bombing raids down there in those bomb shelters. And the mandate from the government that you cannot turn on a light. Any night, you cannot turn on a light. You think that that was traumatic for those kids? Yeah. Would those parents have wanted to do anything in the world to change that? Yeah. But we have a responsibility as a parent to turn trauma and a crisis into resilience. And one of the things that I have lamented about millennials, and I'm gonna broad brush here a little bit about millennials, is that there hasn't been any significant crisis in their lives. And so it doesn't seem like the coping mechanisms are there. We hear the term "snowflake." We see people turning towards self-medication, other forms of medication. And we talk about the greatest generation, labeled the greatest generation. And what those people went through in their childhood. I see parents out there frantically, frantically trying to protect their children from harm, which I understand is an inherent part of being a parent. But perhaps so caught up in that endeavor that they are neglecting the part of parenting that teaches them to cope and understand that I'm just gonna put it as bluntly as possible, shit happens. And this pandemic, if we had the right leadership, could have been a unifying moment for this country. And I think there are a lot of parents out there, and you might be one of them, who are turning this pandemic into a learning lesson for children and for adults. Haven't we all learned a lot about ourselves? Haven't we all grown a lot during this time? Haven't we all come to cherish things that we missed, like family, like human touch, like associating with people at work? Ultimately, these things should make us stronger. If we have good leadership, good mentorship and good parents, these things should make us stronger. And I believe that a child asked to wear a mask for the safety of those around them in the height of a pandemic, the likes of which we have not seen for 100 years, ultimately can and should be a learning, growing and coping experience for that child. That if your goal as a parent is to protect them from everything negative through their entire childhood, when they reach adulthood, they will wilt. They will wilt. And that I think good parenting is a combination of letting them experience trauma and loss, but protecting them enough so that it doesn't ruin their lives. That there's a balance there. I believe that in the long run, many of these children over these last, this last year, will be stronger as a result. They will have had to overcome. They will have had to cope in their lives. Would I prefer that it didn't have to happen this way? Absolutely. But one of the primary roles of parenting is to teach them how to survive the hard. Not protect them from the hard. Jared says, "People are saying it's cold because that's what Fox News has told them and told them they need to fight against that abuse. So sick of lies spread by the news to get more viewers. It's driving a bigger divide between people." B. Kelly on YouTube says, "Can I coin the phrase, 'We have a responsibility to turn trauma, crisis into resilience.'" Well said, sir. Yes, make T-shirts, whatever you want. Brandon says, "Baby boomers messed up this country. Millennials are constantly having problems. Look at this pandemic, housing crisis, out of control costs to higher education, and the list goes on on mismanagement." Has happened. We have to, we have to fix it. Well, if you don't think the baby boomers grew up in a messed up time, then maybe you should look at history. There's been no perfect time and there are always problems that society has to face. And I recommend if, Brandon, you get involved, and maybe you are, and try and fight these things. You've got Biden in office, he's gonna try and fight some of these things. And it's always a pendulum of give and take. Right? But I'm talking about what you do in spite of your ability to control things. Do you teach your children to be a leaf in the wind blown to and fro? Or to be a well-grounded tree that can withstand the wind and the rain? And the torment that comes? If we did our jobs as a parent, the pandemic will ultimately make them stronger, I believe. And I think that there was a vacuum of leadership with the pandemic to lead us to be stronger as a nation because of the crisis. Whereas you look at the majority of the crises before that, we became stronger as a nation as a result. This one uniquely, because of Trump, I believe, we became more divided and we became weaker. I believe 9/11 made us stronger because of a man who got on a pile of rubble with a megaphone and spoke to those first responders. I believe that the nation got stronger because of FDR, because of Abraham Lincoln in the Civil War, asking people to have charity for all and malice towards none. Good leadership should bring us together and make us stronger. Good parenting should help turn our trauma and crises into strengths and coping mechanisms. And I see a lot out there where people are like, they think good parenting is to protect their child from anything bad happening from them. That is not a recipe for long-term success in this world. As you point out, Brandon, there are a lot of obstacles to face. So we need to be bringing up young trees with strong roots who can withstand this. And a lot of parents are. And people are gonna be stronger because of the pandemic. Others will be weaker and that's unfortunate. Okay, we've been going for an hour and nine minutes. Do you still want to talk about AirTags and stalking? Do you still want to do that, anybody? I know we had a couple of people waiting for the discussion about AirTags. These are the new Apple, they look like little coins almost that you can find your lost keys. Anybody out there still want to talk about it? B. Kelly says, "Yes. All I need is one vote and I'm in." So let's do it. Oh, wait, one more thing. Spencer Cox, trying to speak peace and reason to people in their disagreements. I'm assuming this was a response to what happened at the Granite School District.
One is just to say, "Look, we understand that there are some people with differences of opinion when it comes to COVID-19 and those restrictions. We've had this discussion many times. My request once again is just to show some empathy, some kindness, show some grace for people who see things differently than you. There was no, there's no right way to come out of a pandemic. Everybody is doing this at different speeds. We're working through this as quickly at the state level as possible, which is why I'm very proud of our state and the legislature and others who have worked to remove those restrictions. But for those restrictions that still remain in place, again, please show kindness, please show some humanity and some grace when dealing with people who see things a little differently."
Kindness, empathy and grace. There seems to be a shortage of that going around. If you believe what we see with our eyes. I think in a vast majority of society, that's still prevalent. Chris says, Spencer Cox is seriously the best.